I always used to go down to the visiting team and phonetically spell out everybody's.
Good idea.
Yeah, really good idea because Chris because Landon Hookstein is never pronounced right by any single commentator except. And his name said a lot in football games. I know you.
Yeah, well, let's see which one. The one that we always had fun with was Austin Cats. Because it was always Cats Zurich or. Okay, you guys ready over here? You guys ready over here? All right, we will go ahead and get started. Call this meeting to order the city council business meeting for Thursday, October 7th, 2021. It is 6:00 P. M. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Lester, Baker.
Here.
Reba.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Mayor Tom Phillips.
I am here as well. We have quorum, so we move on. So for those on the Zoom meeting, if you want to speak to an agenda item, go ahead and unmute your mic and speak up during public comments. You can also let us know you have some input by raising your Zoom hand or by flagging us in the chat box. We'll then recognize you during public comment. Also, don't forget to mute your microphone after you've made your comments. There's a time delay on the YouTube meeting, so we will not respond to questions that may be texted to people in council chambers. If you'd like to ask questions during the meeting, please either attend in person or attend via the Zoom meeting. So with that said, item two is pledge of allegiance. Would you please rise and say.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, one with all.
Item three is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion second.
Okay, motion by Reba, second by Livingston, all those in favor. I.
I.
All those saying, motion carries. I would like to welcome our guests and public guests tonight. Thank you for being here. We also open for public comment at this point in time. This would be for non-agenda items. We'll give you a three-minute time limit. Realize we can't take action on these tonight since they aren't on the agenda. Also, would like to comment on any item in the consent agenda now would be the time. So do we have any takers tonight? Seeing none, we will move on. So item five, presentations. I have a proclamation recognition tonight. I'm going to go down here to.
Tilt that microphone.
Okay. So we have three Norwalk middle school staff tonight. And why don't I read the proclamation first? Proclamation recognition says, whereas the Norwalk Middle School has several AED devices available at the secondary school campus and whereas school staff is trained in CPR and on the usage of the AED devices. And whereas on Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, a student went into cardiac arrest at the Norwalk Middle School. And whereas according to the American Heart Association, the pediatric chain of survival comprises, sorry, five components, including prevention and early recognition of cardiac arrest, early access, activation of the emergency medical system, early high-quality cardiopulmonary resuscitation, early defibrillation, and effective advanced life support and post-cardiac arrest care. And whereas CJ Dagan recognized there was a life-threatening emergency when the student went into cardiac arrest. And whereas Beth Ward activated EMS by calling 911. And whereas Laura Johnson provided high-quality CPR and utilized an AED to provide defibrillation that ultimately restored the student's heart rhythm to normal. And whereas due to quick action, the administration of CPR and the usage of the AED, these three staff members successfully implemented four of the five links in the pediatric chain of survival and were able to restart the heart of the student. And whereas Norwalk paramedics were on site within four minutes of receiving the call, they found the student awake and alert and did not have to provide advanced life support, but only post-arrest care during transport due to the actions of these three staff members. Now therefore, I, Tom Phillips, mayor of Norwalk, Iowa, do hereby recognize CJ Dagan, Beth Ward, and Laura Johnson as Norwalk heroes and encourage all Norwalk citizens to congratulate and thank these three people for their quick actions that saved the life of a student done at the city of Norwalk this day, seventh day of October, 2021. Congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Well, that's kind of depleted the off.
All right. That's pretty cool.
Yes, it is.
All right, item six is our consent agenda. We'll approve the September 13th, 2021 minutes of the special city council meeting. I'll approve the September 16th, 2021 minutes of the regular city council meeting. Have expenditures, tax abatements, special five-day Class C liquor license for St. John the Apostle Catholic Church. Renewal Class C liquor license for Sunday sales for Gettin' Go. Renewal Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales for Warrior Run Golf Course. Have resolution approving a lease agreement with Pitney Bowes for postage meter. We have an author, a resolution authorizing the chief of police to execute a 28E agreement with the Iowa Alcohol Beverage Division for compliance checks on tobacco, alternative nicotine, and vapor products, vapor product vendors. Have resolution setting October 21st, 2021 for a public hearing regarding a rezoning request to change the bulk regulations for land use parcel C in the Brody's Landing Planning Unit Development. Resolution setting October 21st, 2021 for a public hearing regarding a rezoning request for 1100 Gordon Avenue to change the area around the house from R4 to R160. Have resolution approving a grant contract with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau. Have resolution supporting the Homebase Iowa Initiative. Have resolution approving the September 2021 commercial improvement grant application for 1030 Sunset Drive. Have resolution approving amendment number three to Norwalk Commercial Improvement Incentive Program in the city of Norwalk, Iowa. Have resolution approving the Stormwater Homeowner Grant Program Policy. Have resolution authorizing the city of Norwalk, Iowa to accept Iowa Department of Transportation's Surface Transportation Block Grant Program Federal Aid Swap Funds for the partial funding of the Iowa 28 and Piercesley Street Intersection Improvement Project. And we had correspondence. That was a lot of, can I get a motion?
Motion second.
I got a motion by Cool, second by Livingston. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item seven, we have old and new business for consideration, discussion, and possible action. Item A is resolution consenting to the inclusion of non-taxable, non-taxable right-of-way property located in the city of Norwalk in the city of West Des Moines, alluvial urban renewal area. Hope I said that right. We already have a piece of Norwalk in this urban renewal area, so West Des Moines could use TIF dollars to build Veterans Parkway through the corner of Norwalk. With the new Microsoft data center that's being built, West Des Moines is planning on rebuilding County Line Road using TIF dollars. To do that, they need our consent to put Norwalk's portion of County Line Road into the urban renewal area. Anything you'd like to add? I really just entertained any questions. I think we summarized it in the agenda statement pretty well.
I do have a question. There's reference in to your, in the agenda statement, number two. If Norwalk has a desire to expand, widen the roadway, it will be our responsibility. I just want to clarify that I thought that part of this project, this reconstruction included a widening or expanding at least a little bit. Am I wrong about that?
You are not wrong about that. Their plans, and Wayne, jump in if I say anything incorrect from what you recall from meetings with West Des Moines, but their plans are to reconstruct that roadway, take out some of the abrupt hills. It will involve as far as widening, I don't know if it's going to be a foot, two feet, but it'll meet certain minimum standards for width of roadway. There will be curb on one side. The other side will have more of a existing rural where it's just a shoulder in the future to add so that it becomes a three-lane roadway. That would be Norwalk's responsibility.
But part of their reconstruction is to move electric poles or utility poles back.
Correct.
So that there is room in the future theoretically for us to expand.
Correct. That is my understanding.
I just want to make sure I understood correctly.
Yes. Also includes a bike trail on the north side of the road. Yes, there was a number, right, there were a number of requests that collectively all the elected officials had. Other than the expansion of the intersection to the east and doing some work there, which was probably pie in the sky, West Des Moines did a good job and they were good partner. They came through on all those things.
It would have been nice.
Yeah, it will be nice. And that's going to replace Moffett Lake Drive that goes through the center of the Microsoft site. Yeah. Anything, any other discussion, questions, comments from council?
Motion.
Second.
Hey, I got a motion by Baker, second by Livingston. Any further discussion? Or any public comment? Hearing none, Lindsay, call a roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 7B, it's resolution accepting infrastructure and approving the final plat of Timberview Platform. So this plat is at the north end of Timber Ridge. Looks like B and K has reviewed this and recommends acceptance of this plat. Wayne, does everything look good to you on that one?
I believe there's probably a handful of punchless items and paperwork that transfer hand here, but otherwise move forward.
Okay. Elliot, you got anything to add?
Just one small comment. There was a very slight last-minute revision to the plat because there was a staking dispute between the property owner of the north and the developer. They resolved that today rather quickly, but fundamentally what happened is the developer is going to be deeding over like the north foot of everything west of Timberview Drive to the north. Essentially, there's a fence that was built there by the property owner of the north that, according to the survey, is actually on development property. They're just going to deed over the land that contains the fence to avoid any further disputes. So that was a small alteration to the plat that occurred today. Other than that, everything else is in order. I spoke to Tony B. And he says what Wayne said about the punchless items. It's good to go.
Great. Any discussion, questions?
So that little change with the fence line won't have any kind of a significant impact on what we're seeing in front of us.
No, there's plenty of setbacks based on all the lots to accommodate that.
Any public comment? Okay, hearing none, can I get one? You can.
Did the park ground, I know there was something with the seating and all that appeal or something. I don't remember. Is the park ground all settled up or square or whatever on that?
Yeah, so in Timberview Development, if you remember, it was maybe in the spring. We settled with them and they paid us some out.
And we're taking care of that.
And this week it was disced, smooth, seated, and we are looking at very nice out there right now. Like so, yes.
I hear a motion.
So does the motion have to be specifically include the plat that was sent to us this afternoon versus the one that's in the packet?
I think you can make a motion accepting the updated plat.
And motion to approve with the updated plat.
Okay.
Motion by Reba, second by Livingston. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item 7C is resolution accepting infrastructure and approving the final plat of Holland Point. Plat one, so this is the first plat for Holland Point, located just to the south of Piercesley. Looks like B and K recommends acceptance on this one as well. Wayne, everything good? Same? All right. Elliot, anything you'd like to add?
Nope.
Any questions for council?
I heard that all those lots probably sold to the builders.
Really? So the builders, all lots were sold to builders? That's amazing.
I have a question about the bulk regulations of the sites. What are site setbacks for seven and a half or 15 between two? And I just am asking for clarification because I may not remember correctly or.
Elliot, why, for some reason, I remember that came up as part of the PUD.
Yeah, that's just what the bulk regulations are defined as in the land use table for this part of the plat.
They didn't understand what you said. Thank you.
So because it's in the plan unit development, that's just what the development document says the bulk regulations are for this phase of plat.
So what's your, the regulations in the code, if you open the zoning ordinance, show the bulk regulations, I think you are accurate in what you said. Under the plan unit development allows us to we got rezoned to PUD and part of the PUD requirements or the, what's allowed in there is dictated in PUD that those reduced setbacks could occur. So I believe, and I haven't read the PUD on your question, I believe, Elliot, the PUDs in compliance with that or the, this plan is in compliance with the PUD.
Yeah, and I think, I think one of the things that we noticed is that they even stake out the lots to not even to the full extent that the PUD would allow, but several of the lots are wider and deeper than, than they can be under the approved bulk regulations. But this is what they designed to make it all fit into that one space. So yes, it is compliant.
Elliot, the mayor just brought up a good point. It appears they have Waller Avenue. Should that be Nelson Avenue instead of the city manager in Indiana? What they were going for.
Oh, I think they were looking at.
I'm just joking.
The tight end of the Raiders.
Any other questions, comments from council? Any public comment? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Cool, second by Reba. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item 7D is resolution accepting infrastructure and approving the final plat of Blooming Heights South Plat Two. This plat is located on the S curve at the corner of 50th and G14. B and K recommends acceptance. Wayne, look, everything look good on this one too?
Yes, sir.
All right, Elliot, does anything to add?
Nope.
And this too, I'm sorry.
No.
This two is a PUD that says they can have five-foot setbacks?
Correct.
Okay, so I would ask in the future when there are, when there are things that are outside of our code, when there are private streets, when there are more narrow setbacks, when there are those kinds of things, I would ask that those be pointed out. Not today, right, but when we are approving the PUD, I would ask that those be pointed out.
Okay, when we're approving the PUD or when we're approving flats?
Well, this came out of the PUD. I wouldn't have agreed with the PUD. I don't recall.
Okay.
The discussion. My fault for not noticing it.
Okay.
Maybe it'd be okay to do both times.
Yeah, but I would, I would like when things are not in compliance with our code, I would like that to be pointed out so that we could discuss and maybe still approve, but.
Right.
Discuss.
All right, sounds good.
This all complies with the PUD though, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. Any other discussion, discussion questions for council? Or any public comment? Hearing none, can I get a motion approved?
Motion second.
Motion by Cool, second by Baker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item 7E is resolution approving the site plan of 1424 Sunset Drive. So this is the RE/MAX building at the corner of Highway, Highway 28 and High Road just to the south of the post office. Looks like they're upgrading the facade of the building. They applied for grant funds to help with the costly upgrades. They're also doing some upgrades to the interior. Elliot, what do you have to add?
Just a statement about, about why this is considered site plan amendment because when we do commercial site plans, one of the things that you review is architectural material compliance. Since they're doing a complete tear it out and reinstallation of the facade, we triggered a site plan review. In Planning and Zoning Commission, they presented a plan that was substantially different than the one that is on the agenda tonight. The requirement for this zoning district is for 75% Class 1A, Class 2 materials and a maximum of 25% Class 3 and 4. What they initially proposed would have been 100% Class 3 and Class 4 materials, which falls completely short of our requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval contingent upon its complying with the required material percentages. After a few phone calls with the contractor and a revision, they're closer to that. It's closer to about 66% Class 1 and 2 and 33% Class 3 and 4. But the council does have the ability to grant a waiver on those percentages for some flexibility. This is one of those properties that's requesting a facade improvement grant. And I think everybody in this room's probably noticed the work being done over there. So it's a, what they're presenting here with the stucco and stone, those are your Class 1 and 2 materials. It's a market improvement from their initial proposal, which showed, I think it was hardy plank and fiber cement board, which is a reduced, reduced volume material in our zoning ordinance, so.
So the P and Z approval was for 100% compliance with the class of materials and we are now at 66%?
That, that was P and Z's recommendation to council, yes. This is, this is not quite exactly in line with it, but it's, it's pretty close.
So would this be considered P and Z approved it or disapproved?
This, this would not reflect P and Z's recommendation.
Okay.
If we're looking at it as a black and white way.
I don't think they saw it, right? They didn't see this.
No, we said it would be, that would be based on, on 100% Class A material.
Yeah, no, I understand that part.
And they chose not to do that evidently.
I understand that part. I guess I'm just quibbling with your choice of words and it's disapproval. If they didn't see it, they couldn't have disapproved it.
Correct.
But it's not.
And they couldn't have approved it either.
Right, agreed, yes.
Is the material that's depicted here presented to us, does it comply with our senior ordinance requirement?
The materials themselves do. It's the percentage of the material per facade that is not quite the correct percentage.
What portion of the building is not complying with the facade?
So it would be the, the upper portion that sticks out a little bit on the sides. They're planning on putting black shake up there, which is a Class 4 material. And that's about 30.
At least it comes off the roof.
Hmm.
It's being, okay.
Yep.
It's being counted in the facade.
Yep.
I got a. And it's better than the piece of metal that's sitting up there today, so.
For what it's worth, when we calculate facade percentages, we generally don't count the slope of a typical sloped roof. So, and commercial building, that's not quite as common, but Wayne, it would be an example of sloped roof. We wouldn't include, you know, the roofing material there in that calculation. It's a little bit different, but.
Why do we include it here?
Because it's straight up and down.
It's not actually a part of the roof. It's, it's part of the front.
Yeah.
It's a flat roof building.
Hmm.
But the rest of the building is covered under the Class 1A and 2.
Yes, yes, it is.
It's just the catching.
Can I ask a legal question?
Okay.
Could we approve this with the stipulation that they meet our requirement?
Our requirements are.
The material.
100%?
75. You mean our requirements under our code? That's inherent. They have to be.
But we're asking to, this is agenda with the variables, right, so.
So we're either approving this or not, and then they have to come back with something else.
We can't approve it.
What are the odds of actually getting a $50,000 grant for something that's not? This is tangent to this, but.
Didn't we already approve the grant?
No, they won't be fully approved until.
They're not approved the grant.
Okay, I was going to say if they're not using.
Mine would be, the grant should only be covered.
Yeah.
766 and two-thirds percent is part of that.
I'm voting no on all of this.
So, so can we just step back for a second? Because when we went and toured all the townhome projects, we had a discussion about some of the requirements that we have and some inflexibility and some, you know, can't, can we be more flexible? You know, generally, this is what you have to do, but, you know, you don't. I mean, I think it was in the context of balconies, right? If you say we have to have balcony, how does that look? And are you telling us where and how and all that stuff? I don't, I'm just trying to understand what is the problem with black shaker roof in, in front other than it's classified differently?
I think it's a durability question mostly.
It's why some of our commercial buildings in town that used to be homes look pretty degraded 30 and 40 years later, where commercial buildings usually last long.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
The durability issue.
Fair, and I disagree with that, but we have other ways to address dilapidation and I don't know, I'm just asking for questions right now.
So if we approve this as it says, are we doing two things? Are we approving this plan? But also are we approving the grant for something that doesn't meet our standard?
The grant's not.
But this is what will trigger, looking at it from the grant.
They have to go through this process. Elliot has to sign off on the improvements being made that they're applying for the grants. So if he signed off on 10 of the 15 that they're applying for money for, then we can only give them grant money for 10 of the 15.
As much as I appreciate what they're trying to do, I guess I, I've got concerns that if you go down a road and we approve something that doesn't meet our standard. And you're going to come back.
Let's do PUDs. We approve something that didn't meet our standards.
The PUD ordinance allows for that.
Yeah, just makes me nuts.
Yeah, no, the PUD ordinance does allow that, so that's not something, you know, granted, that is the legal way to get around the setbacks and to, to go around it, but it is, it's legal because it's in our code. It allows for that type of zoning, one of zoning over PUD seal. So it's not that that was approved illegally or contrary to our code.
It was.
It might be contrary to our normal standards because that's contrary to code. Now, I was not asked this question before, but I, I don't see how we can just kind of say, okay, this is our standard, let's turn our head and ignore it. Just kind of say, okay, this is our standard, let's turn our head and ignore it. Because we certainly didn't turn our head and ignore it on the PUDs, I mean, that, that's, whether we agree with it or not, it was a legal route to take that.
It was discussed.
This is not properly before us.
I don't.
I mean, we can't.
I don't see how you could approve something that we know, that we know is contrary to our code.
Okay.
Now, something to remember is that the architectural regulations do say the council can waive the percentages of the material types. And I think the reason that provision is in there is to provide flexibility in situations like this, when a building was designed in the eighties. And then subsequent recodification, you know, might put some constraints on what anybody can do for a renovation, so.
So what, what could they do with this tough piece that would get them in, I mean, I'm just, it. They're this close to hitting the seventy-five percent number. Is the door counting against them currently? I'm just asking, is, are the windows counting against them?
They took out the last, the bottom rung of them.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm just saying, you know, I'm trying to point out that, that they're so close and, and quite honestly, it's kind of. No, no different than tearing down an old house and putting in a building that's gonna be. Dropping water into somebody else's backyard now, and, um, I mean, it's, it, to me, it's like we're, we're improving a site significantly and.
It's improving, but it'll also be an inconsistency, how you'll explain to the next person that wants to do it.
Ah, mostly.
But we do it all the time, we've done this with several.
All the time.
Not something this late.
Oh.
The five foot was discussed immensely at P and Z and in here.
But we've done, we've done this before on, on, on co, front coverings and especially in remodel situations.
In remodel, but.
I'm saying, we've done this before and, and it makes sense in certain areas, and this is one where. I'm struggling with, you know, telling them no, when I don't know what they can do to, I don't know. That overhang thing, I don't know if it's gonna structurally.
What, what if we tabled this and then, uh, had our inspection people test it and, the way they might come in. Is that?
Elliot, did. I mean, did they tear off the whole facade before asking? What could be put up, were they just, because we ran into the situation in another building and it was, they did something that did not comply. And what they did can't be taken off the building and it looks awful.
Build to this day, it's awful, correct?
My concern is that when those architectural standards were developed, it was hours, hours of planning and zoning time, consultant time. We got developer feedback. We, we set the, the percentage of classes for a reason. And this building in particular, anything along highway twenty-eight to me is important, that's the front door of our community and they want it to look nice. I want it to look as, as consistent as possible. I would hope that if it's a, if it's a monetary thing, maybe they put the stone a little bit lower, the stucco a little bit higher. And they get to where they need to be and, and it's still within the same cost. I mean, there, there has to be some way, if they, they modified it between P and Z and now, there must be another way, David said they're, they're so close. I would just like them to comply, I, I don't want to be overly difficult because, I mean, it's a great business and they're improving the property and that's great. Cause it's, it's gotta look better than it did before. And so I want to encourage that, I want to encourage you to make community development grant program, but it just seems ironic. That one of the largest grants for community development improvement doesn't comply with our code. It's just, if you're gonna use city money, I, I don't know why it doesn't comply with what we say.
I would agree with that, I don't necessarily want to vote no and stop the thing from happening, that's why I wondered if there might be support to table this. And that would give the shout and I'll.
If we vote no, can you not come back next week or does this fall under a planning and zoning thing where you have to go through it like a full year? I mean.
It hasn't been through planning and zoning anyway, it sounds like.
Cause P and Z approved, recommended approval if it complied one hundred percent. If what you guys are asking for is for us to go back and request a revision that is one hundred percent, then P and Z would. I mean, their recommendation would be tannamout to approval of that revision.
We both know that Jim, that, that doesn't mean that they got like, you know, some, some cycle, they gotta wait.
They gotta go back to. We go back to T and Z, that they don't have to wait, it's not a rezoning, it's like nine a rezoning.
Can I ask a legal question? Is facade covered under definition within our code? This is me asking because I'm waiting for them to come back and say, no, your code doesn't say that's part of our roof, that's not part of the facade. If it's purely a judgment call, I think we're. We're, we're toast and pretty much need to go with what they've got, but that's why I'm asking. That's why I asked about percentages of how you were getting there, because I was worried that. That was included and it maybe shouldn't have been.
That's a good question, but I think it's our judgment.
So I, I liken this a little bit to my neighbor's house and they have a portion of their roof. That comes down flat in front and it is roofed like their house, it is a portion of their. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know that it's necessary to their roof, it covers. Probably about, you know, that depth or length of the same length from the top down. Of their roof and it is shingled like a roof.
And that's the, that's the style of residential.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but what I'm commenting on is, I don't, I don't know, I don't understand why this is not roof and. And who, who says it's not roof, us, I don't.
Think originally it was Four Sons Army. Something like that, it, it was a portion of the building to look different.
So, so essentially all of the other gas stations are not in compliance with the seventy-five percent rule either, because they all have the same. Rim around the buildings.
Make that.
Do they have, they have the appropriate material on that though?
I would suspect to the rest of the building to be able to be, yeah, seventy-five percent.
Looks like a facade trim around the roof to me.
Again, if it's not defined in our code. Then it's gonna become a judge's definition of what the facade is.
The thing is, I don't know, we, I don't think we can determine whether it's defined in our code at this moment, I mean. Uh, I can sit here and read really fast, which I've tried to do.
So it is.
That's my, that's me saying, my concern is.
It is to find.
Yeah, so facade area shall be total exterior wall area of all vertical or near vertical faces of a building. Four feet, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, this doesn't fall under that.
Thank you, I, I mean, that's, that's, that's what I was wanting to make sure because.
Good job, Bebe.
You know, I, I think, uh. So P and Z recommended approval of this specific plan?
No, no.
Or basically.
Another plan that said it had to comply only if it complied with our code.
Based upon the materials being on the list.
Correct. I just, uh. I just don't see us having flexibility to just say we're gonna ignore our code. I mean, it, our, our, I think our regulations allow for flexibility if it's in a PUD. And I think even our facade requirements, when we look at the facade requirements in the, uh, or, you know, our. Those type of requirements, it even says that we can make exceptions if it's a PUD area. So I don't, I think, frankly, I think Ed's idea of tablebing it so they can readjust it. Supposed to just say, no, I mean, either way it could work. Or if this council wants to go back to P and Z. So, I know we're all dancer, I mean, these are, these are good citizens, they're doing good things for this building. Right, and we don't want to send a message that. You know, slapping them down for some reason, but frankly, it doesn't.
If we table it and the material's compliant, doesn't it automatically go back to P and Z, wouldn't that be the point to go back?
No, if we table it, it'll come back here.
So then we need to vote no to send it back there so they can work through it.
I don't, I don't need to send it back to, to P and, I mean, I don't need to send it back to P and Z, I think that adds more time. I think that we can table it and tell them they need to meet P and, what P and Z said.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
So I got a motion to table.
I know that that would be appreciated by P and Z.
Table it or?
No, what, what they said.
To require them to be in compliance with what P and Z wants.
All right. So.
I'm gonna get a sec.
Second.
There we go.
Thank you. Uh, any public comment? Okay.
So to clarify, we are tabling this until. They have a plan that meets.
Right, and tell them to bring it back.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so. Lindsey, would you call roll?
Councilmember Lester?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes, and I appreciate what you're doing up there.
Livingston, no.
Okay, so most of the table carries. Item seven F, it's first reading of an ordinance amending chapter one twenty-six mobile food vendors and chapter one seventy-seven racing fees of an ordinance code. So we've had quite a few discussions about the food truck ordinance. Staff is ready for council to review the ordinance and begin the approval process, this is the first of three readings of the ordinance. Elliot, what would you like to add?
I have nothing to add at this time.
Okay, what discussion questions, comments, does council have?
I have questions, I did not realize at the time that we were going to have a separate permit for every location that a truck might be at, a food truck. I thought it was per food truck was our permit process. But now we're into the discussion of, okay, they're at the south end of the Lutheran parking lot, what if they decide to go to the north end of Lutheran parking lot? Do they have to get a new permit? If they're at one function or whatever, they have to get a new permit for every location for every truck. That part I think is new, is I didn't realize.
That was there before, that was there.
I think it was there before, the, the discussion that we had on that, because there's.
But we had a lot of stuff before, we didn't have permitting process and so.
But, but the, the discussion is, we, we discussed that, uh, when we got together to review this and operate it and, uh. Reasoning behind it is we started saying, okay, if we're gonna regulate distances from, uh, buildings, other, other businesses. If we're gonna require permissions from landlords, that if we didn't individually permit where it's gonna be located. How do you give the food truck a permit to locate in the Ace parking lot, to the church to the north, to the bank, you know, over here?
In order to protect the restaurants, that's the only process.
In order to, if we want to, if we want to regulate it the way that the council wanted as far as, as those distances and all those requirements. We didn't see any way how we could grant a single permit and allow them to go wherever they want.
All right. That's true, because we need those safeguards.
And currently it's based on property, right? So when you do a permit, you pay even in, so like located on the. South end of the church over here, they would still have to get Pyra's permission to locate there, because Pyra's within X feet of the property line of the church. Okay, cause that's how I'd understood it at least, was it's based on the property, not on. Location within a property.
Are you good with that?
I am good with that.
Okay, good. Other comments, questions? Okay, hearing that, do we have any public comments? That, can I get a motion to approve first reading?
Okay.
Which by Cool, second by Lester, any further discussion? Hearing none, Lindsey, would you call roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Reba?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
All right, motion carries, item eight.
Can I say one more thing on that? Sure, can we have the second and third readings, is anybody opposed to that at the next meeting on that one? I just want to get that one going and done.
There's been a lot of interest of this in the public spotlight, social media, I think it should.
All right, item eight, council inquiries and staff updates, Jim?
Nothing.
And my only question is maybe for Elliot and your department is, uh, that, where they took that house down, it looks great. I'm thrilled they took that ass down on highway. But when there's a four-foot fence behind and the dirt levels, even with the, the fence, I'm a little concerned about water and some of that stuff running off that property, so. I just noticed that today.
This is the one center.
On highway, highway twenty-eight, the.
Oh, okay.
The old bread, it, there, it's just got residential houses behind it and dirt is even and it looks like it's right up next to the fence, but. You know, I'm driving by, so who knows, but just something to go as we move forward, the report on that property, make sure there's a good water. Plan, because I'm concerned about the people behind the house, or about in the houses behind there, so.
Okay, and though.
Thank you.
How about that Norwalk football team, huh?
Oh, wow.
And I got the experience driving down Cherry Parkway, you know, and enjoying that nice overlay. That was nice. Good job.
All right, Elliot?
No updates from me.
Wayne?
Nothing tonight.
At work?
Um, since we met last, we did have our pancake breakfast, we served about eight hundred and seventy meals, which I thought was a lot for a second pancake. About three hundred of those were drive-through, the rest were dine-in, um, we did have a blessing in the new truck, we put that into service officially, which was good, because then our other ambulance went down, so. In the shop now, so, um, that's unfortunate, but we're working through that. This week is fire prevention week, um, October third through the ninth, we visited two of the elementary schools so far, we're visiting the other one, um, tomorrow. We had fire prevention open house last night, uh, we did some vehicle estercation, um. Uh, demonstration, which was new for us, that the public really liked, we think it was something about a hundred and seventy-five kids last night, that was a lot. I think that was us being back in the schools and then we publicized that there and, uh, maybe was pretty excited to be on the mound, so I think this is a successful.
Great. Thank you, Chief Staples?
Nothing other than we had our second PUD life event last week at, uh, Thursday Park. With soccer and snow cones and grilled burgers and hot dogs. And everybody seemed to have a great time, so the next one will be inside most likely and it's not planned yet, but. It's on intention, keep true.
Good.
Oh my gosh.
Good job out of Lily.
Yes, fabulous job out of, she's done that really, she has taken that and then run with it. She raised about two thousand dollars to fund it. She's organized the whole thing and it's really turned out to be a wonderful thing.
Awesome, thank you, Jean?
I'm just gathering data for our next bond sale, um, working on the preliminary official statement. Uh, we'll bring that to you November fourth, we'll make sure you get plenty of time, uh, to review that ahead of time. Also met, I hope I'm not stealing something of Robbins today, but we met with, uh, Sports Plugs. And I really hope his numbers are accurate, um, if they are, uh, it looks like that our revenue sales plus concession sales, we would get like a portion of it. Could potentially cover all of our O and M expenses, so was really pumped up about that. And I think he was pretty conservative on his estimates, so. He'd be a lot better.
That's good. Yeah. Thanks, Holly.
And speaking of, um, the sports campus in Norwalk Central, so we just received the development agreement legal draft from bond council today. Um, so I just sent that out to a couple, um, internal to review and then we'll get it out back to, um, the sports developers for their legal review and then it'll come to you guys, so. Could even be here at the next council meeting, that'd be amazing, um. So that, we also have the development agreement draft at legal right now for, um, the landowners, so all of Norwalk Central for that infrastructure. So that will be coming back to us for review in this next week. And then all of us have met a hundred times probably over the last couple of weeks with the civil engineering and architects, builders and design and. We have real concepts now in place for what the, the whole sport campus will look like or, or could look like, um, especially the civil side of it and then, um. Yep, just those two development agreements are really close on the PUD is almost finished for, um, all of Norwalk Central and the Hughes Century Crossing area. So once that's done, that triggers the next level of the agreements, uh, so we should have that hopefully by next week. And then, uh, we've had so much interest in that area since this stuff's gone live, like we've had. The sports developers have been approached by Prove Pubs and Orange Food Retailers and Investment Groups and there's just a lot coming in now that this is getting more and more public. So on another project, we have a fitness center that will be built up by Beardsley and Highway twenty-eight. It's about a three million dollar project up there. So they just purchased the land and so we'll have a little bit more information coming to you soon about that. May have a small development agreement on it and nothing big, but we might have some shared costs there with them on a parking lot opportunity. And then we also sent in an RFP. Elias, anybody who's a beer fan. They actually put out an RFP. They want to build a whole new huge facility here somewhere in the Des Moines metro. So we were on that like buzzed on stuff and we got really creative and Shelby went out and took some pictures in the hair and Luke and on the golf course and got brave with it. So we'll see if we get a a response back. I think they're focused a little bit on the East Village, but not even a competition. So anyway, we are working on that. And the hotel also, we got some feedback this week, some really positive feedback with the D O two process. Their right-of-way and vacation process, all of that's moving really quickly now. So they are, I think, Luke, I think they said the offer for the land should be going through here in November. They want the development agreement best to be done sometime before the end of the year because they have some potential COVID incentives that are focused on the travel industry and hotel that will expire if they don't apply for it by the end of the year. So we want to try to get that to you guys here really soon as well. And then they got ahold of us yesterday about the project maybe even be quite larger than what they're talking about. And so we may have to come back to you guys and say, you want a much bigger hotel and no restaurant or do you want the little smaller hotel and restaurant? So we might have to determine what we want there, but we've got some pretty cool options. And then last, I guess, would just be that the Kosovo military and state partnership is a ten-year anniversary. So they're having some formal events on November fifth and sixth at Camp Dodge. Couple of you probably got those emails. If not, let me know because it came from sister states instead of consulate. So I don't know what their contact list is like. But an actual formal event on Saturday night on November sixth. So let me know if you want any more information. I think that's it.
Is going in next to Mahalo?
Um, right next to Mahalo, to the north?
Uh huh, no, to the south in that building.
Okay, well, they haven't, I guess, technically announced, but we do know who it is. It's a service provider. You can whisper to her, David. Yeah. We're just waiting on a.
They're car parks out there during the day several times.
A secret, I just have to. Okay.
They're advertising for jobs online as well.
Super. It's a super place.
Yeah, it's a super place. It does lots of cutting.
Any other question? All right, thank you. Robin?
Um, just wanted to let everyone know that phase two of that connection to the Great Western Trail has started. It started on Tuesday.
Yeah, what happened to the bat concern?
Uh, so.
Did we not have them?
It was time. It was time to check out leave. So that deadline is through the end of September. October first, then we are able to go in and and clear trees and not be
Why just?
In violation. So, yeah, so Tuesday, a clearing of trees and dirtwork started. There will be occasional one-lane traffic there. If it is attached to our project, there will be a flagger there. There was a flagger on Tuesday.
So there was a flagger today on our project. There was not a flagger slightly up the hill where all oncoming traffic was hidden and the only sign was take turns. I couldn't see what I was taking turns from. It was very.
And I am not sure.
There was work, there was, when I drove back later, there's a huge patch on the street.
Right, yeah. I am not sure whose project that was.
Is it Mid-Am doing the work in the right of way for the?
Mid-Am is doing work in the right of way. I think it was Wednesday, our engineer, or maybe it was Monday, our engineer drove by and it was Monday. And they are installing a gas line between the road and the trail there on the south side. I am not sure.
This was on the north side of the road.
And.
Yeah, this was, this was patch on the north side of the road, whatever. It was just the location in between the two activities. And especially the the other one, whoever they were, it was right on the rise.
It's still.
You can't see anything on the other side when you're headed west. It's not a good situation, but I don't.
Maybe Mayor would have the staff check that situation to see if they need to advise.
City engineers working with them. It's a patch for the sewer project contractor damage. Let's treat their contractors required fix it. They came in today. I don't think city engineering aware they're not doing it. They didn't want to have to say it in the end of Saturday. Tony's been working with them on getting better traffic control up there.
There you go. Thank you.
Sorry, I have to do twice. No.
Hang on.
Um, no, that's it. Well, the bridge is still set to come in November, so cross our fingers, maybe it comes earlier, but right now, that's the latest that I had this week. So it still is mid-November, so.
Will they be ready to set it or are they going to set it aside for a while like the other ones?
Um, so it's a, they have a contract. It's a seventy working days that they, and that started. We've been during the time we had to wait for the the bat clearance. They were, their days were ticking away unfortunately, so. They have seventy days, so they can't let us sit there too long. They are not sure if they're going to put it together first and then put it all in or if they're going to try and put half of it in and then the other half in, still a lot that we're working through, so. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Lindsay?
No.
No, Brian?
I only have one thing. It's not necessarily good news, but based on some of the feedback that I've heard from engineering, from public works, parks. I wanted to give council a heads up that as we go out and we're bidding more projects, certainly, as you know, contractors are busy. The feedback that we had from De novo, the group that's helping us with the design of the building, construction material costs, construction material availability. There just seems to be a lot of factors ramping up against us in terms of having projects come in at project estimate amounts. Wayne informed me today that we rebid the sewer project that eliminates the legacy lift station. Bids came in better, but they're still well above what our estimates were. So you can expect to get some feedback on that in the future. So it's primarily just to give council a heads up that this is not, nothing unique to Norwalk, but just be prepared for that to continue for some time.
Okay.
A lot of shortages there in the supply chain, but sometimes driving up prices. Steal. I'd already hit better.
Staff, staff shortages. We've we've heard from contractors that have said that they are not bidding public work. They are so busy on the private side. So just finding contractors. And I hope that it is recognized, the engineers that we've worked with on a number of projects, they do us a lot of favor in going out and trying to attract more bidders for projects. So they do a lot of work on the backend. So certainly they're trying to help those bids be as low as possible. There's only so far we can go.
Right. All right, thank you. Only thing I have is community chats in here, nine o'clock, Saturday morning. Come on in, break up coffee, we'll chat. All right. Uh. You'll be in Colorado? All right. I come with you? All right. Item nine, closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one dot five one J to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate. Where only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price, a governmental body would have to pay for that property. Jim says valid reason for a closed session.
Yes, it is.
All right, can I get a motion to move into closed session?
One second.
All right, motion by Reba, second by Livingston. Lindsay, which call roll?
Councilmember Reba?
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, so motion carries. We're in the closed session. We'll let Lindsay change the tape.
I know, I've heard about this. I have a favor. Pulling options down for me. He has a.